So we're going to call the work session to order. Just again, a couple of safety things that we do have a lot of people in this room. We are actually have a fire code in the room, just so you all know. If there is an emergency, and the Fire Marshal is here, just so you're aware. If there is an emergency, we ask you exit out the room, take a left, go down the stairs. If that way is blocked, you're just going to go all the way around past the County Executive's Office, down those stairways. Do not use the elevator in the event of emergency. If anybody wishes to make a public comment, which we are allowing tonight in our work session, there is a cart out in the hallway that has the comment forms. We ask if you please fill those out and just pass them down to Megan, who's going to act as our city clerk tonight's assistant, and she'll pass them on down. So we have a few things on our agenda. We will go ahead and get started with the first item. First, the last two items on the agenda, the resolution that I assume most everybody is here for, and the downtown development project presentation will be combined into one. And City Administrator Andy Kitzro will be making that presentation. So now we will go to the first item on the agenda. In the hot seat is Colonel David Minchin.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving me the opportunity to address you this afternoon with a request to appropriate funds from a forfeited seized funds account. So we're not asking for any money to be taken out of any particular account other than money we already have. So we're just trying to move some money we have in our forfeited account to purchase a storage unit for our property, evidence property room at Silver Police Department. This request comes as a result of an audit inventory that was done. It's a recommendation from the company, S&amp;B and Company, that performed the audit inventory. And the recommendation is as a result of certain items that we cannot dispose of. For instance, weapons that are used in serious crimes, drugs, and certain paraphernalia, things that we just have to hold on to an extended period of time. And we're really, we're just honest to God, running out of room. And our building was built in 96, and it's just, we're limited on space. So what we're trying to do is develop systems that can store more, more property in a confined space. So that's what this is. And this is an expandable unit, so as time goes on, we shouldn't have to come back before you to get a new unit. This will be something we can add to.
Any questions or comments from the council? Everybody okay with moving this forward to the next legislative session?
Yes. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Next up is ordinance to amend the duties and responsibilities of the Fire Marshal. And we have Fire Marshal Eric Kramer, Deputy Chief Chris Obarski.
Eric. Sorry, we couldn't hear. Hey, how are you guys? Thank you all. Again, we'll try to take up too much to be fine. First thing we have in front of you is an amendment to our Charter 8.11 of the City Municipal Code. It's to update our permanent requirements and prescribing penalties for specific violations. I have my expert Fire Marshal with me, in case you had any specific questions about the ordinance itself.
It's been pretty straightforward to me. Everybody good moving this forward?
Yes. Second is an amendment to Chapter 2.16 of the City Municipal Code. And it's going to update and help define the actual duties and responsibilities of the city Fire Marshal.
Any questions or comments?
No, it's pretty well laid out.
No questions?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
There you go.
He's not here.
It is. Thank you.
Okay, next up is a tax amendment to include limited service rental or repair establishments in light industrial district. Brian Soper, then I have to raise my voice, and he's here. How you doing, sir? Andy, do I need to drive?
We skipped one.
Oh, I'm sorry. So this is going to be the Environmental Policy Task Force annual report. My apologies. He's got both of them, so.
Tonight, I will just be driving this, and we have Dylan McCurnich, who is our sustainability specialist, who will be presenting. So, right, this is Dylan? Dylan, Council?
Everyone. Okay. So, as you're all probably aware, the Environmental Policy Task Force was something created in 2020. This is a bunch of recommendations that we got from several different stakeholders, people in the industry, sustainability, environment, et cetera, that recommended several policies that fell under five different subcommittees. And you'll see them here: energy use, emissions, water, wastewater, stormwater, management of open space, transportation, operation design, and of course outreach and education. So the elements of this, we went through synopsis, the benefits, the barriers, actions required, the climate change implications, diversity and justice, and priority level, and recommended timeline. So first, we had energy use and emissions recommendations. We kind of broke this down into incorporating energy and emissions assessments into city planning. We are, of course, in the infrastructure development department. Environmentally conscious building policy for city-owned and private construction projects. Then the city vehicles, the maintenance and use and alternatives. And then we have renewable energy procurement, onsite solar, and community solar. One of these recommendations as part of energy was to embed energy and emissions assessment into city planning, as I discussed. And so these goals need to align with the Maryland Climate Solutions Now Act, which is a recent development. The recommendations for implementation will be adjusted depending on that. We're still waiting to hear from their final plan in December, but upon so, we'll be making some major adjustments. This is actually a greenhouse gas inventory that we acquired in 2019 that we've been following up on. And here you can break up basically everything that takes up energy for the city facilities, the largest one being the wastewater treatment plant. So our next subject was water, wastewater, stormwater recommendations. We wanted to increase public outreach and data accessibility, something that we're developing right now. Lead poisoning prevention, which is something that's been developed. And then we had stormwater in the trash insert, which is a recommendation. And then gray water infrastructure development, because they're both things that we are exploring. So one thing that we're working on now is the Sustainability GIS Open Data Hub. And so what we're really hoping to get out of this is to be able to show the public exactly what's going on in the realm of sustainability, and also giving them some means to represent what they see as sustainability issues that we should be working on. Another thing that I said has happened in the past is the copper and lead water testing. So this allows people to request testing for certain things to basically prevent certain poisoning in their water supply. Then we have the management of public open space recommendations. We have a park staff and organization, that's a recommendation, that's to be determined and worked on. We have established policies and procedures, which we've made some milestones on, prepare a citywide parks and open space master plan, and then increase collaboration with government, for-profit, and nonprofit organizations. So in terms of establishing policies and procedures, we established a comprehensive city parks donation policy, which is the process for ordering four different types of donations. And then we established the internal executive order determining the chain of command for parks, planning, maintenance, and public outreach. We've been increasing our collaboration with several organizations. Really, this has borne a lot of fruit, and I'm very happy to see that these collaborations have created several different projects, initiatives, and community-wide outreach initiatives. And our next subject was transportation, sustainable operation, design. We have to coordinate with Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee on sustainable initiatives, incorporate SmartWorth initiatives, and something we've been making some strides on is bay-friendly and sustainable landscape options. So regarding to that, we've started a pocket pollinator meadow. So this is something that residents can register for, so they can vary from the current ordinance. This allows people to create essentially pollinator gardens in their yards without having any sort of enforcement on the, you know, what would before be considered lack of lawn care. We are currently doing a lot of outreach on this right now, so people are aware of this sort of registration, so that people can get involved and help supply our pollinators with the food they need. And then, of course, outreach and education, this is a big thing. We've put down water bottle refill stations and let people know about this, efficient and effective plumbing conveyance systems, partnerships, recycling and solid waste initiatives, environmental health initiatives, and nuisance flooding. With regards to water bottle refill stations, we put them in City Park, Ben's Red Swings, the Boundless Playground, and the Riverwalk near the pedestrian bridge. This is the water refill suggestion that was actually recommended by an SU student named Abby Pedanati, and she was really instrumental in getting this done. Another partnership that we got involved with was with the SU Environmental Studies Department, and also through their Beacon Community Outreach, the Cooperative Environmental Trust, and the Green Team. And we were able to get a sustainability reports out there for everyone. And then our big success in the past year has been the passage of the plastic bag ban, which is something that's being implemented very soon, starting July 1st. We've been going around the community, Megan Notton's been very helpful in that. We're really going to be reducing a lot of the trash and litter that goes into our water streams and even to the landfills, and we're very encouraged and thankful to City Council for their help in this. We recently had an eco-adapt workshop between several different stakeholders, and this really helped people get a greater and consistent picture of the environmental needs in the area, and what can be improved, and how we can implement that. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Well done.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes.
On the refillable stations.
Of course.
Why were they only put in certain parks?
That, I'm not entirely sure of, I'll be completely honest with you. I would love to see more, and I can get on that immediately.
April, I think we are working on getting them in all of our parks, places that already had water infrastructure in place, was the place that I think we started first, but I know we are ticking away at adding them to all of our parks. I think there is a plan to do that. If you would know of any parks specifically that you notice to hit next, I think that's our plan, is to do all of the parks.
Thank you. Any others?
Just want to say I'm really proud of the progress we've made since we had, you know, being lucky enough to serve on the task force in the council. I really think that we've made a lot of great strides. We've got a little bit, a little bit more work to do, but we've made some really good progress on it.
Sounds very good to come in a green city, and I'm happy to see it. Thank you, Dylan. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And we're going to double your pay next year for that. Okay. I'll hold you to that.
Change chairs. All right. Next up is the tax amendment from our city planner, Brian Soper.
Thank you all again. Before we now, we have a tax amendment to add, to permit service rental or repair establishments in the light industrial zoning district. This is reviewed by staff for the tax amendment to Section 177620. It was prepared by the city attorney. The Planning Commission held a public hearing and forwarded the favorable recommendation to the city council on March 16th, 2023. At this time, it's important to note that there are some similar uses in here in the district already. They would include a planned business center, multi-use facility, hairdresser shop, animal hospital. It's definitely one of those sections that's in need of help when it comes to the new zoning code. We believe the initial response was brought on by an applicant who was looking to have a tattoo parlor. So we refined a little bit so we didn't have to keep doing one-offs every time.
Any questions or comments?
I can have a comment. I just, I just feel like at this point, and not that this wouldn't happen or whatever, just to, anything additional right now, just, we're adding anything to the city. To pause any, any, any new projects.
This is...
I'm trying to find it. I'm trying to find it.
This isn't a project.
This isn't a project, this is just adding.
This is...
Just adding additional stuff to the code. Right. My comment is, any additions at this point, just, we can revisit this at another time. I think we have bigger fish to fry in regards to anything additional right now. We just need to kind of pause and look at it. That's all I'm saying. It goes forward, it goes forward, but I just feel like we need to pause.
This came from an individual who is trying to open a tattoo parlor.
I understand, I understand all of that.
So he will not be able to open his business if we do not approve this.
That's just my, that's just my comment. That's just my comment. That's just me.
Okay.
That's all, that's just my comment. That's all I'm saying.
Any other questions or comments from the council? So are you making an official motion to table this particular item?
I would like to, yes. I'd make a motion to table this ordinance.
Rest of the council, do we have...
One second.
...to table this item?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So anybody else, we have, anybody else like to see this tableed or moved forward?
I think we can move this forward. It's kind of a, sort of, something that we do all the time, and, you know. I don't see what the, why we would need to put a pause on it.
Yeah, this did get passed by the Planning Commission at a public hearing at the Planning Commission.
Where is this location?
I understand, I understand all that. I get that.
Where is the location?
Most of our light industrial zoning is off of Northwood. I believe this location is up there as well, off of Northwood.
For sure off of Northwood, do you think, or do you know?
It was represented us that the applicant wanted to open up a facility in Northwood.
Okay. All right, thanks.
But it would obviously impact all of our zoning districts for light industrial.
Correct. So one, one thing is from the application, Northwood. The second thing is it would impact citywide ordinance, correct?
It would, it would impact every light industrial zoning district.
Right, okay. All right.
That's, that area, so.
Okay.
Megan?
I feel this is pretty straightforward. I'm comfortable moving it forward, but if the rest of the council feels like we need more time, I'm comfortable also, if they need that extra time to feel comfortable moving forward. I'm, I'm fine as is. I think this is very straightforward.
I have another question. We have a tattoo parlor moving in a light industrial area.
Yes.
So that's where, like...
I know where it is. I know exactly where it is. But my thing, my question is, why would we have a tattoo parlor moving into a light industrial? There's nothing industrial about it.
Well, I pointed out that also in the district, a hairdresser shop is allowed. You know, I, I think over time, certain districts and businesses evolved, and land uses evolved, that these uses have been added.
And the final mention, how long has that hair salon been there?
I do, I do not know that. I don't know when the tax amendment was done for that.
I think the thing is, though, we need to make sure that our codes are up to date with the changing times.
Yes.
And that's, to me, is the priority here for that.
Yes.
And that's something that Brian will be working on as he goes to comprehensive plan as a part of that. I support moving this forward. I voted for it on the Planning Commission, and so if we have three, we'll move it to the next agenda for legislative agenda. Thank you, Mr. Soper.
Thanks, Brian.
Next up is, we're going to have a presentation by our city administrator, and then to discuss the resolution for authorizing a restated disposition agreement for Lot 111 and 15. Mr. Kitzro?
Hi, thank you, Councilman Buda. I would like to spend a couple minutes talking about downtown redevelopment. There's been a lot of information that has been circulating, a lot of positive, positivity that's been happening, and I want to kind of bring the council back up to speed where we are with a lot of our high-profile redevelopments and some of the plans that we have moving forward. First thing we'll do is kind of go back in time. We have downtown revitalization. You know, why focus on downtown revitalization in the first place? These are three high-profile quotes coming from individuals who really focus on municipalities. I want to draw your attention to the middle one. Downtown is important because it's the heart and soul of any community. If you don't have a healthy downtown, you simply don't have a healthy town. Additionally, on the top, a city's downtown area has an important and unique role in economic and social development. Downtown is creating critical massive activities where commercial, cultural, and civic activities are concentrated. This concentration facilitates business learning and cultural exchange. We knew this, we've understood this. So we created master plans, not just us. Over 2,500 individuals participated in the two-year process for us to create a master plan in downtown Salisbury, 2015 to 2035, and it was adopted in 2016. You can see, all of the people who participated were citizens, city officials, architects, urban planners, graduates, undergraduates, faculty businesses, nonprofits. Lots of individuals participated. What we created was so high-profile that it won the Maryland Sustainable Growth Commission Award in 2017. And it hits all of the areas on business development, and green spaces, and parking, and how, why should have infill, and what does redevelopment look like in bike lanes and green space. We are only in our eighth year of our 20-year plan, but I think it is important for us to maintain and continue where we are going. Shifted focus is our local housing crisis. We've been talking about this for the last several years. Housing shortage, Salisbury has been among the fastest-growing areas in the country for the last decade and a half, but until 2022, housing development was slow from 2007 to 2017, not a single-family house was built in Salisbury. We are down 120 housing units in Maryland. The primary cause of shortage is the slowdown in housing development following the 2008 financial crisis. The primary factor extending the crisis is local government resistance due to political pressure from NISM. Also remember, the people who benefit the most from the shortage are the same people who control the housing inventory. And housing affordability, simply supply and demand. We don't have enough supply, the demand is extremely high, we have extremely high rent, we have extremely high pricing. Decline in affordable housing is correlated with the rise in homelessness. We cannot program our way out of homelessness. We must build an adequate number of housing units. We have been talking about this over and over again. That is seen in our Horizon incentive program, our Here Is Home incentive programs, our housing expansion plans. Let's talk about new construction. What is the economic impact of new construction? According to the National Housing Home Builders, a one-year impact of building 100 rental apartments to 117 million dollars in local income, 161 jobs. I know the ROSS for the last two years has employed over 100 people every single day for two years working on that project alone. What comes after that first year? $2.6 million every year in local income, 44 more jobs added to the economy. Here's a case study that comes out of Illinois. A $43 million mixed-use development created 400 jobs. The earnings of those 400 jobs, $23 million to the people who work those jobs, $67 million in local economic impact on that one project alone. What did they spend their money on? They spent it on food, restaurants, entertainment venues, year in and year out, millions of dollars going into our local economy from that one mixed-use development. How do you spark redevelopment? First, we strategize, we create a game plan, create a vision Salisbury, a 20-year plan. Then we invested. We did our Main Street infrastructure plans. We've created our special events and our cultural activities. We've refocused our area on a vibrant downtown by creating the Arts, Business, and Culture Department. We are sparking redevelopment in downtown. We have created incentives. This is a very important thing for us to remember while we created Horizon and the Here Is Home program. Salisbury is a tertiary market. Tertiary markets mean private equity does not want to invest in that marketplace. So without incentives or state aid, no housing development project would have moved forward in downtown. The large, high-profile developments, not one of those would have moved forward without incentives or state aid. And then we have to pass legislation and planning documents that move this vision forward. So what does that mean for what is on the table? These are the big six. The Ross, Salisbury Town Center, which is Lot 1, 11 and 15, Salisbury Marketplace, Sergeant Market Center, excuse me, which is Lot 30, Marina Landing on the property that's going to be developed over behind the Marina, Lot 10, and then Lot 16. What are the impacts, potential impacts of those downtown developments? 700 housing units, 110 hotels, 2,200 people living downtown, $250 million in construction, up to $350 million of construction during jobs. Look at those jobs. Economic impact every year based off of those six developments, and an increase of 350 jobs. So these have a real impact to our economy? They do. They have a real impact to where we want to be and what we can do. So what are the status of these projects? Here's the timelines of the status of the downtown housing projects. We surplused all the properties because we knew we needed to. We awarded to developers to develop these projects. We have initiated land disposition agreements. We've contracted sales. We've gone to at least initial settlement or final settlement on every one of these projects. And we have supporting legislation to look at all of this. Now, what is on the table later tonight, which we'll jump into, is the one that's highlighted red, Resolution 3263. That is discussing the restated LDA of Lot 1, 11, and 15. The initial settlement was for 1 and 11. The restated LDA includes Lot 15 and a modification to the site plan. We have already gone to initial settlements on Lot 1 and 11, those are off the table. But we will get more into that Resolution 3263 momentarily. So this one I'm recommending, you know, nothing fundamentally has changed whatsoever in the underlying assumptions as in Vison Salisbury. We have continued down the path that we laid out eight years ago. We're continuing to tick away and to redevelop our area, and housing being a primary focus of that. Please not let the voices of a few landlords questioning that should not be taken to reflect a change in this vision, if anything questioned their motives behind minimizing housing inventory. Why would we want less housing? No planning, real estate, or housing expert would ever encourage abandoning our efforts that are being recognized as the standard and best practices that are every other jurisdiction would follow. We need more housing, we need more revenue to continue our trajectory. Our revenue now is in the middle. We've got a couple options as a council. We know it's been a tight year with the budget. We need to find more revenue infused into our area. We can either grow the tie, or we can take more from what it is, or we can go backwards with growth. It's option A or it's option B? I'm arguing for option B. People want to know, the supporting documentations that help and verify and support all of these claims, there is a laundry list of people, just Google economic development and downtown revitalization, and there is tons and tons of literature on what we are doing. Again, we are, we are, we are a trailblazer in the state of Maryland. We are trailblazing the country on the decision points that we are making. I just ask you and employ you to continue down this path and continue what we're doing. Now, the elephant in the room is this. We have surplus, and we have sold, and are planning to sell most of our parking lots. We have a plan. The city of Salisbury is working on a plan for infill and accessibility. We have 100-plus on-street parking spaces that are going on. We are continually working on improving our existing parking infrastructure, security enhancements in our parking garage, ADA accessibility, modernization of our technology and our abilities. We're looking at incentives through our business director on what we can do to help businesses in downtown to make it easier for them to navigate. A lot of these things we faced when we ripped up Main Street, and we made it through, we're going to continue to work through people as we look at the new normal with our parking master plan. The mayor wants to do a roundtable with downtown businesses to talk about this, talk about this out loud, figure out strategies and ways we can continue down. this out loud, figure out strategies and ways we can continue down and make sure people are heard and that we are managing and doing the things we need to do. And I plan to, with some additional people, come back in early July at the work session and talk more about the actual details of that plan. You've seen the first part of that plan was with the development of Unity Square, and we have more things to come. It is a moving target as more developments come in mind, but we would like to, similar to this, go through the whole timeline, but we are working through it. Last thing I'll say is fear is real. People being fearful of the unknown or change is real. Sometimes it may not be warranted because they just don't know, but it is real. We take that seriously, and we want to work on finding creative solutions. If that is, again, adding additional parking spaces where we can, adding ADA or accessibility where we can, incentivizing, or figuring out ways to solve problems. I'm all ears to figuring that out. But I implore us to not lose focus on the path forward that we are taking. That economic development revitalization is crucial to the success and the future of Salisbury's growth. So I'm going to pause. That's what I wanted to present. We can jump to the resolution, or I can answer a couple of questions, or if, Mayor, you have any additional comments that you'd like to make.
The only comment additionally, or is actually repeating because I think it's worth repeating, is that no one in this room can deny we have a housing problem, and especially an affordable housing program. I will make one comment that the other day, I met a young lady through business that graduated from SU. She has a contract, a one-year contract that's renewable. That young lady started to cry and told me that as of this minute, she's going to have to cancel her contract, and she loves it here, because there isn't an affordable housing for her to get into. That's not acceptable in my book. And it pains me, but I will say it, it pains me that we have vocal landlords that are saying, we don't need housing. And then the other comment that I heard two days ago was that this isn't affordable housing. Neither is the affordable housing that they now charge to the people who they're renting to currently. It's a fact. People cannot find housing that they can afford, period. And the only way to do it, what happened with the egg crisis during the time when all the birds got sick? What happened? Why? And why did they go up? They went up because the supply was gone. When you have a good supply of whatever it is, that creates pressure on the people who are responsible for whatever it is. The more you have, the more pressure there is on price, and that's why we're doing what we're doing. I am not going to change a thing in my book, because this is the only way that we're going to dig out of this mess.
Well, I have something to say. Now, me, myself, I do believe in affordable housing, and I do believe we need housing. But when I asked the question a few months ago, or maybe a year ago, when this project came up, I asked the question to one of the developers, how many affordable houses are you going to have, units are you going to have in this complex? They couldn't give me an answer. They couldn't give me an answer. And I remember that, absolutely. I remember them not saying, so what is the guarantee that we're going to have affordable housing in these apartment complexes, in the apartments, in the developments?
One of the developments of one of the lots is designed as affordable housing, low-income housing. That's happening on Lot 30.
Okay, now, I have another question. When it came to the master plan, why hasn't anyone seen the master plan?
It's been on the site.
I couldn't find it.
No.
I couldn't find it.
It is, it's under different, it's not what you think it would be.
Well, I'm just going to say this. Like I said, I believe in revitalization, but I just believe that the downtown area has gotten everything, and the other districts have gotten absolutely nothing. And I'm about headed with it. I mean, I'm serious about this. If anybody believes in affordable housing, it's me. I live in affordable housing. I live in it. I have a daughter who lives in housing where her rent is $1,500. She has a child. I have another daughter who is buying a home. Her mortgage, she is high. I mean, I understand this. Don't think, I don't understand, but how fast do we think we're going to get these affordable housing up? How fast do we think that we can do this? And why are we taking? It's just like downtown, I mean, and I understand that because when I lived in Florida, I saw everything happen in the downtown area. But what happens to the other areas of our city?
It's a parallel path.
You can't separate it.
Yeah, with Here Is Home, I mean, we don't have a conversation about the rest of the development, but there's different paths forward through the state, through tax credits, through redevelopment. That stuff is coming.
Here Is Home started over there off of where is it? Beagle Park Drive? Is that what was? Okay. Now, the question to you all is, why did affordable housing go over there? When the need is here?
We don't.
You know what? I'm just, and I'm not trying to make anybody look small, stupid, or anything, but I have just about ran myself ragged thinking about this, and it's just, you know, it's easy for somebody to say, okay, affordable housing, affordable housing. It's easy for you to say that. Let me say another thing. We have developers coming here, building. We don't hold our feet to the fire. Pemberton Apartments, look at it. It's a win to 50 million hands, and it just seems like nobody cares. Nobody cares what those people live in, and that's affordable housing? And it looks like something over in a whole nother third-world country? But we care about people? Come on. I'm about headed about these fancy apartments and everything else, and we got apartments right here that need to be tended.
Are we adding?
Yeah. No, 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 it's fine. I was just trying to understand if we were adding administrative comments or not, but...
No.
No, we're still on the...
We're on the plan.
Andy, I want to speak to just the fact that Here Is Home is not just downtown. It is all over the city, and the units are spread all over the place. Everything from assisted living to, and disabled housing, to affordable housing, to market rent, to single-family homes, townhomes. It covers a wide range. Can you send out the map again to everybody so we have the map for where all of the locations are? Because I think a good refresher for that would be, show us where, because they really truly are throughout the city. It is not just downtown. There are a lot of units going up in different places. There's housing, it's single-family homes being built in Angela's district.
Correct.
Down by the Civic Center.
And that's just what I said. Angela's district. Angela's district. What's in District 1?
So I know that, just remembering the map, I couldn't tell you exactly where they are, but I know that there were quite a few of those spots on your side of town.
Here Is Home, where Here Is Home has been and functioned in how long? Three years? Two years? Three years? When did they build them?
Well, they have to, like five years to...
Okay, but they haven't built them.
Well, development's a pretty long and lengthy process.
And I understand that, and that's what I do know. That's why I am putting the question on the table. How fast do we think that we can get these houses up? And where do we choose for them to go?
So, a couple things. Here Is Home being the catchphrase that we've used for that housing expansion incentive program really had three facets. There was the waiver of building permit based off of an aggressive timeline to develop. We needed housing now. It was in a very aggressive incentive program to develop affordable housing, one of the most aggressive in the state. That if you thought affordable housing, you would get a $400 per unit tax credit, one of the most aggressive in the state. And then there was incentivizing development for nonprofit companies that specialize in the Salisbury neighborhood housing and Habitat for Humanity. It was actually a three-pronged approach. A lot of that was based off of, we can, there's two ways we can do this, Angela and Michelle. We can incentivize districts, areas that we want to push that and have further that, or we can do it as more of a community-wide thing. Knowing at the time for downtown revitalization as a key to our success, we incentivizes that. The state incentivizes other areas, Enterprise Zone, Ride Zone, different things like that. We can also, knowing what they're working on through the state level, there is also opportunity areas that we can also designate or create that further incentivize development. What we have to do is connect developers who are interested in that development, who also want to return on that development with the type of development that they want to have. A lot of times with affordable housing, it comes down from tax credits or money that they receive from the state from a subsidized thing. There's some additional developers in the room who could probably talk a little more in detail, but I know for a fact we are looking at trying to do some revitalization this year or next year over in your district. I know we are working on transitioning ownership of Mitchell Landing with a full gut job redevelopment of that area. We are holding Pemberton Manor feet to the fire after we found out what was going on with that. We don't like what is happening in certain areas, and we want to address that as best we can. I want us to have more conversations about this at last. But I think, and I don't want to say we are specifically talking right now a little bit about the downtown area with the implications, but we need to be talking about housing and the housing prices and shortages, because we can start something today and be two or three years. That doesn't solve the person who's under the bridge right now, on a friend's couch. But I think we have a partner at the state who's going to be continuing to invest in people who are investing in the unsheltered and unhoused and the vulnerable populations. So I think there's more to come.
Come on. Go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead.
Do you have to push something?
What I want to say is the developers, where are they from? Developers that have these lots, where are they from? Are they from here or are they from...
Some of it's local, some of it's private equity nationally, internationally. It all depends. I don't know the makeup of all the different development companies, but at least for the projects that are downtown have partners or people who are part of that who are from this area, have kids here, want to see the success of Salisbury.
Is there any more comment? Because I want to make a motion or something, but I didn't know if there was any other comment before.
We're not really in a, this is more of a discussion. So there's not an official legislative thing right this moment.
Okay, so before we get to the resolution, because we would have to take a vote to move that full on a lot.
We would have to have consensus from the council to move it.
Yeah, if we go to shift to that conversation, Jennifer's also part of that, and we want to hyper-focus right down to that resolution, the contents of that, we can...
Okay, so if anybody else have any more comments on Andy's presentation?
No, I'm curious if, I guess I do have, I said no. If this is going to be available to the public, because I think it'd be phenomenal information that we could share with the community, I think this is something I think the community's been asking for a couple of weeks, so that, just to provide some more transparency on the development, I think is something we've all kind of agree on here is needed on top of the development itself. So if that is something that you can share, I'd love to actually have a copy myself.
Yeah, and we can even, it sounds like some people have trouble finding the downtown master plan that can be set out and made available in several different mediums.
If we're ready to move forward on the item on the agenda, we can have Ms. Miller come up and make the presentation. Is that where you are, Angela?
Yes.
Okay, so then we'll have her do her piece first, and then we'll go into comments on that.
Rena's going to join us.
Oh. Hi. I'll have to introduce myself. Rena, could you introduce yourself and then tell everybody what you...
Why I'm here. My name is Rena Patel. I'm from the Law Office of Mary Ann Abadie. I serve as Special Conflict Counsel for the city, and for this purpose, I'll be representing All right, well, good evening, everyone. Thank you. What you will eventually have before you tonight is the resolution for council to accept the amended and restated LDA for lots 1, 11, and 15. But before we got there, what I thought I would do is a couple things. Just basically walk you through some of the nuances of the amended and restated LDA, if that would be helpful for the council and the public as well. So the amended and restated LDA for city-owned parking lots 1 and 11. The original LDA was approved by council on October 12, 2015. It was executed on October 30, 2015. Lot 1, if you remember, it's the large parking lot between Circle Avenue and Camden, and Lot 11 is on the west side of the library and the Cannon Building. So now, the amended and restated LDA incorporates the sale of parking lot 15 as well. Lot 15 is at the corner of Camden and Market Street, adjacent to the former Parker Place Building. This property was listed by KLNB, that's the city's contracted commercial real estate broker, in November 2021, and was publicly advertised on LoopNet, CoStar, the KLNB website, and via a broker blast to real estate professionals within the city of Salisbury. City Council approved an exclusive negotiating period with Salisbury Town Center Apartments, LLC in February of 2022. So now, I'd just like to call your attention to the key differences between the original LDA and the amended and restated LDA. So I'm sort of walking you through both documents. This shouldn't take long. The first difference really is that we will be subdividing Lot 1. That's Exhibit A of the packet. So as you may remember, the original LDA contemplated the sale of what I'll call the entire parcel of parking lot number one. Since then, the development plan has changed considerably, and now will be resubdivided to include three main areas. The first being what they call the Unity Square Lot. This will remain owned by the city of Salisbury. That's where Unity Square will be located. The second main area is what we call the Parking Garage Lot. That will also remain owned by the city of Salisbury. And then the third is the Salisbury Town Center lots, and these are parcels that will convey to the Salisbury Town Center Apartments, LLC. All right, so that's the first difference. The second difference between the original LDA and the amended and restated LDA is the inclusion of the sale of Lot 15. The third difference is there will be a deposit of $25,000, which is a non-refundable deposit should the developer default. Next, this new agreement includes a construction and permanent maintenance easement, which is Exhibit D in your packet. And then finally, there will be a construction management agreement, which will be Exhibit E. Now, that agreement is currently in draft. It's basically going to function as a contract manager at risk document, which defines the relationship of the parties. So that's the relationship between the developer and the city. It states the responsibilities of the developer, statements of work, bonding requirements, general terms and conditions, decision-making authority, fees and payment structure, project schedules, how to handle contingencies, scope changes, and really a plethora of other contractual details related to the design, construction, and commissioning of a new parking garage. There is also, one of the other main differences between the original LDA and the amended and restated LDA are what we call delayed performance penalties. $7,500 for each month the developer remains in default of... the developer remains in default of any of its obligations with respect to final